Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the meeting of the City of Bloomington Council. And if everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for more than a second. Thank you. Hi, clerk, could you please call to...
Councilmember Kearns?
I'm here.
Councilmember Bowden?
Here.
Councilmember Motney?
Here.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Here.
Councilmember Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Crunkler?
Here.
Mayor Madalawny?
Thank you. I believe we have no recognition or appointments, and we're gonna move on to public comment. Clerk, do we have any public comment?
So we received no emailed public comment, but we do have two people registered to speak after your statement. The first one will be Joe Shonar, and the second will be Scott Stiling.
Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen to all points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time is expunged.
Alright, so first up, we have Joe Shonar. And to follow will be Scott Stiling. And just for the record, Jeanine Toft did register, but she was not to speak. Thanks.
Thank you. Hopefully, you all have seen the email sent to you by my neighbors and I regarding our concerns about zoning at One White's Place. I'm here to just speak just about one thing, which is why we believe that there is a role for the council in resolving this issue. City Code 4411-5B says, "When a nonconforming use of a structure is discontinued for any reason, for a continuous period of one year, such use shall be not be reestablished." The meaning of "for any reason" is clear. If you read other sections of the code, you will find many explicitly stated provisions, exceptions. But there are none in this section. One White Place has been unoccupied for approximately two, for approaching two years. And the code specifies what the outcome should be. The owner is required by City Code to apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a new special use permit to continue nonconforming use. If you would please imagine that you are a member of this council and you are involved in a revision of the zoning code. Now imagine when a member of staff comes to you and says that part where it says "for any reason", what that really means is "for any reason except if the owner is undertaking extensive renovations", or unless the owner intends to continue the same nonconforming use after the period of vacancy. Would you accept that unstated expectation? Or would you say, "No, the code should mean what it says, and the exception should be spelled out"? We all know what happened here. When the staff's interpretation of the code was questioned, they went to the city lawyers and asked, "How can I argue that my interpretation is no"? And the lawyer said, "Well, you might argue something, something, something." But seriously, is there a question what the meaning of "for any reason" means? There may be many ways in which this mistake was made. It doesn't require anybody to have done anything bad. Maybe staff who issued permits didn't realize their renovations would be so extensive, or take so long. Once the permits were issued, turning around and saying, "On second thought, you need to apply for a special use permit", would be pretty awkward. And it could end by being expensive for the city, too. But that's all beside the point. The meaning and intent of the code is clear, and it's reasonable to expect the city to abide by the code, even if there are costs involved. If you agree that the city has failed its responsibility in this case, then we hope you will sincerely express your concern to your fellow aldermen and city leadership. You are, you or your predecessors are the authors of this code. This body is who created this code and voted for it. And what should count is the meaning that you and your predecessors intended when you read those phrases, not what the lawyers can come up with after the fact. Thank you very much for your attention, and I hope you'll pay some attention to this now.
Alright, last up, we have Scott Stiling.
Scott Stiling, Ward 4. My concern is regarding the sidewalks, the roads, and potholes in this town. With, the ADA law says that all sidewalks should be ADA accessible. That was in effect in the year, I believe, 2000. We're long past 2000, and they're still not ADA accessible. I realize when they put new sidewalks in, they are ADA accessible. But if a person would be this late in following the code, I wonder if they would be cited. But the city can do it. There's two storm inlets that they have sunk so low it's dangerous to clean them up. The curb line is level with the grass. There's no excuse for that. If they would've been kept up, we wouldn't be in this situation. The inlet at the bottom of Fleetwood Drive, which is steep hill, as you all know, the rain comes down that hill and floods this drain, plugs up the drain, and floods the street. You know, I've said before, all you need to do is put an inlet beside that inlet. Why rip it out and put an eight-inch inlet in there? Why not put a four-inch inlet right beside that? And you got your eight inches. And do it in front of 111 and across the street on each side. And that should be sufficient to handle the water that comes down that road. The sidewalks are a tripping hazard. I've seen an individual that his son lives several hours from me. He was over to his son's house once, was trying to use a walker on a sidewalk. They turned around, went out, tried to streak the street so bad they went back to his son's house. That speaks real well for the city, doesn't it? And we know it doesn't. I would suggest, I would hope that you would do something about this before there is an accident. And I will not clean the storm inlets out in front of my house because it's too dangerous to clean them out yourself. I'll just call City Line and City Council and clean them off. All they have to do is raise them, and I'd be glad to clean them up, keep them clean for you. Thank you.
There's no further public comment.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda. And is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? 7D, okay. I may come out soon to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 7D, as in dog. Okay, alright, awesome. Second by Councilmember Motney.
Councilmember Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowden?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks? Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crunkler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item pass it, no names to announce, and we're gonna move on to item 7D. Councilmember Ward?
Yes, I asked for this to be a bold knock because I'm against it. In fact, I'd like to move approval, but I wonder if city staff could simply give us an explanation of this, especially in light of the previous comments, why we're passing this item.
Sure, thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. We do have Kevin Coates in also, Jeff Jervis here, if you want to speak to this. Kevin, you can come to the podium. But really, generally, this is part of our streets and sidewalk and alleyways project program, whereby there's a larger program related to streets, but then there's also this one, where we do annual maintenance on different parts of our community, streets and sidewalks and alleys as well. This is actually adding funding to the agreement that we put up passed in the spring, which is adding more money to the project to do more work. So Kevin, I want this to be a thing, but very generally, could you give more of a description if you got it?
Right, so this money is used with a contractor to do special work outside of the bigger programs. You know, we have the annual sidewalk contracts and the annual resurfacing contracts, which deal with a lot of our streets. This is more of a fun source to be able to do special things that come up throughout the year. And what I mean by that, maybe it's, you know, fixing some shoulders or repairs to bad joints or other specialty repairs that are not part of another program. We use this money with the contractor to do those other types of repairs that come up. And so that's why this amount, while significant, is not near as big as some of those other programs, but very important for us to be able to maintain things that come up during the course of the year.
So we're basically adding $124,000 to the sidewalk, sidewalk budget.
Right, and it could be used, like I say, for sidewalk repairs. It might be for a special need with an inlet somewhere, or shoulders, or, you know, in some cases, like we're adding some money in here for fixing some guardrail. Lot of different repairs, but they're all related to, you know, streets, alleys, sidewalks, all that type of infrastructure. Just, you know, this is more throughout the community as things come up, and we have the budget for it. We did this every year, and obviously, we ordered it for the, you know, the bid amount back. This spring, we have more money in the budget that just wasn't allocated to that. So this allocates the remaining budget to let us do more work with it.
And if somebody had a concern about a particular inlet, for example, or curb, or something like that, how would they go about asking you to evaluate whether it could be prioritized with this?
Yeah, they can call the public service number, or, you know, send an email to, well, Public Works. Our, you know, support staff answers calls and emails every day with different concerns from citizens, and they would just report it that way, or through, you know, the My Bloomington app with the public stuff, they can report it that way as well. So number of ways they can, you know, get information to us about something they'd like us to consider.
Kevin, another question for you. So how, when would this work that's been identified be completed?
It would be, you know, work that would go on this fall, probably finish up in the spring. These are repairs that usually don't take quite as long to do as, you know, some other types of roadwork projects. But as you can see, we've already, you know, basically spent the money of the original contract amount. We have more money available, you know, we have a budget in. So all this work in general will be completed by May 1st of next year, you know, as part of this fiscal year.
Thank you.
I have a question. Have you already identified areas that need to be done? I know you said that it's unexpected, but I know that the staff is out there evaluating different areas in the city.
Some of this will be used for some shoulder work repairs, like for instance, along Fox Creek Road, stuff like that. Some of it will be used where there's been guardrail that's been damaged, and we'll do some repairs there. Not all of it's been allocated, so to speak, but there's been a number of things identified already that we can, you know, use additional funding to talk with.
Okay, thank you. That's a safety issue.
Yeah, and that's what, you know, we look at as we prioritize these things, is, you know, what was, you know, safety concerns, what's, you know, functional concerns where if we don't address this soon, we're gonna create situations that are going to result in more damage, more cost, you know, and that type of thing. So we take all those things into consideration as we, you know, choose where to, what to fix next type of thing.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. I trust your judgment.
Okay, does anybody have any other question, motion?
I moved approval.
Okay.
Selecting.
And, my clerk?
Councilmember Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowden?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crunkler?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, passes, no names to announce. Seeing that we have no regular agenda item, we gotta move on to the Finance Director's Report. The man who shines in the spotlight.
I'd love to. Billy, the introzer, just launch it to it.
I'd say go for it, Scott.
Well, tonight, we're presenting the August 31st financial summary, so that we're four months into the fiscal year, one-third of the way. But you've heard me say this many times, you know, our revenues are on a delay, receipt recognition schedule, so we only have two months of sales tax, so it's still early in the year. So I'm gonna highlight some financial statistical information and some financial structure information as we go through the presentation this evening. So next slide, please. So major tax revenues, you know, the major, the tax revenues are the primary funding source for the General Fund. It's our largest fund. These are still trending very well, being fueled along by inflation, strong local economy. You know, starting to hear, as I'm sure a lot of you are as well, concerns related to the economy slowing down. There's record high credit card debt. You know, so we're seeing the same amount of expenditures, especially here locally and nationally as well, which is keeping these revenue, sales revenues, sales tax revenues up. There's a concern that, you know, we might be hitting that limit, especially with that plus $1 trillion in credit card debt that is being held by residents and citizens of the country. Then, of course, high mortgage rates. A lot of the economy is fueled by the housing market. So with rates, 30-year rates, I think they're around 8% now, you know, that's gonna potentially start impacting revenues as well. But we do have a very, I mentioned this before, knock on wood, very strong local economy, very strong local employers, so we're very fortunate. So this month, I thought I would just highlight, you know, the prior year-to-date variance. You know, so we're looking at the one, two, you know, basically the middle two columns there, the right, the right one, in comparison to prior year. So we did increase the budget in most of our categories, except for local motor fuel tax. I've sometimes seen the variance per to budget. It's a little hard to get a grasp on unless you're looking at that last column to see what we increased it by. But just looking at the revenue compared to prior year, you can see the increases that we're realizing, except for in utility tax, some variances, you know, and maybe we had a hot summer last year related to electrical bills, et cetera. Franchise tax, that kind of goes up and down. But primarily, you're seeing the increases across the board in all of our tax categories. That local motor fuel tax, I will highlight, that's $111,000 over year-to-date budget. We did take it down $100,000, but it's $97,000 over prior year. So that's not an inflation-driven tax, you know, that's 8 cents per gallon. So that's just more utilization of tax here, or, excuse me, gas here locally. People are traveling more this summer, so a good indication, you know, those dollars are restricted specifically for roads, along with 10% of our home road sales tax. And then the very bottom, in that middle column, it shows us $2 million, very positive variance year-to-date. Last month, that was a million and a half, so we made $500,000, a positive variance over prior month, just in one month activity. And then one last thing, you know, we're gonna be launching into budget here pretty soon, FY '25, right around the corner. So there's some discussion already around the community about, you know, property taxes and EAVs. We do not have a preliminary EAV from the county assessor as of yet, so we're waiting on that. We're gonna start checking out that this time of year, check today, and it's still not available. Next slide, please. So the General Fund, again, largest fund, so our financial structure, the General Fund. We usually highlight, we highlight enterprise funds every month. The General Fund is funded primarily by taxes. It supports public safety, parks, economic development, administration, et cetera. You can see in the far-left column for the budget, we have almost $100 million, a total of $140 million that's funded via taxes for the General Fund. Service revenues are another large component, you know, parks, ambulance services, et cetera. But this is the fund that gets a lot of attention across all municipalities because it can be driven, the health, it can be driven just by the economy and those tax revenues. So I wanted to highlight quickly again the use of reserves. We use that in the far-left column in our budgetary balancing. So how we balance the budget, how we show our revenues matching expenditures, when we're actually gonna use reserves. So basically, that's a $17 million loss that we're budgeting for the General Fund, a use of reserves for the year. We started out the year, we approved the budget using three, a little over $3 million for subsidies to the arena. But then we've approved additional amendments here over the last couple of months for ARPA and ECD programs, because we did not capture those in this year's budget. And then we did almost $10 million subsidy to the sewers, stormwater, water funds for the Locus Colton Phase 4 and 5 projects that was voted on by council a couple of months ago to accelerate that project and do the whole project all at once. So we're predicting using $17 million in reserves this year. And then the last thing I'll highlight is investment income. So you can see that we have $597,000 roughly year-to-date in that second column. If you look out to the far-right column, last year at this time is $183,000. So interest rates, you know, everyone knows they're way up, you know, 5.5% is what we're just earning at the bank right now. So you don't wanna build your budget on that, but we'll take it. Next slide, please. General Fund expenditures, these are tracking fairly well. Last month, we talked about compensation, salaries, and benefits, a little had a trend. We've had an extra payroll in the first couple of months. We have 26 to 8 areas in the year, not 24, so sometimes we have some cyclical impacts on our budget. The other thing I'd like to highlight is the transfer out category. You can see that's $21.3 million, that's the revised budget, that's the budget amendment primarily. Locus Colton transfers to the other funds, bumped that way up. That's why it's at 55% of the budgetary allot for the year, because we have already did that transfer. And then under the projected column, we leave that right in budget, that you can see the $17 million, so this is the second one from the right. We're predicting that we're gonna have $57 million in reserves for the General Fund, $17 million in useful reserves, so all other things being held equal, and we're showing that 39, you know, roughly $40 million reserve balance at the end of FY '24. All things coming in right in budget. Next slide, please. So enterprise funds. This classification of funds, water storm, sewer storm, solid waste, golf, the arena, these are considered business-type funds. They're supposed, you know, from a financial structure standpoint, support themselves from GAAP and GASG standards. These funds are set into a different category, so that's why we separate them. Typically, we just highlight, you know, the revenues, bottom line there, revenue trends. One thing I'll highlight is golf is doing very well this year, I think I mentioned that last month. We're showing $1.9 million in revenue. This time last year, there was only $1.6 million recognized year-to-date for golf. Whether it can really kind of control the revenues of that fund, so it's one of those items that are kind of out of management's control. But again, we'll take that, and the activities are going very strong in the golf fund. And then the arena, showing year-to-date actual revenue of $529,000, very far to right, all the way down to bottom. This time last year, we only had $42,000 in revenue for the arena, so that's kind of showing the traction we're getting, you know, Entertainment Division Director that's in place now. A lot of emphasis within city management related to activity at the arena, so, you know, we're showing some impact there as well. Next slide, please. And then this year, one of the things we're highlighting, one enterprise fund per month. Just gotta roll the cycle right through the list. So this month is sewer, the sewer fund. So, you know, where do sewer revenues come from? So we show charges for services, 7.9 million. I'm not sure if everyone knows, but sewer billings are basically based off of water usage. So the charge is $2.78 per cubic foot, there's also a fixed fee per month. And these rates are highlighted in our budget document and Budget Book Number 1, you know, online. You can see a table of all the rates for water, and sewer, and stormwater, and solid waste. And then also kind of part of the sewer billing is the binward fee, which we collect for binward, but it's not cashed in our revenue, so we collect that for them, we just put it into a liability account, we pay them, we just pass that through. But I wanted to mention that we do collect for binward, which most people are aware they see that, that charge. The revised budget shows $4 million in miscellaneous revenue. Well, from a budgetary standpoint, they're pretty much operating on cash accounting. So we're showing borrowing as a revenue for a project that's gonna be executed, or was planned to be executed beginning of the year. This is related to the East Street Basin project that potentially was gonna be executed during the year. We're gonna have to borrow for that, a bond borrowing, and so those costs are built into the budget, were associated with the borrowing component. And then the last item on this, revenues for sewer, the transferring, because he had the revised budget, was showing almost $3.1 million. That was the budget amendment approved by council. Subsidy from the General Fund, part of the $10 million budget amendment from the General Fund, transferred out to water, sewer, and storm, and solid waste for the acceleration of the Locus Colton Phase 4 and 5 program. And then the last thing I'll mention out here is, we have a budget of $15.7 million total. But if you take out the $4 million, miscellaneous revenue, we're looking at about $8 million operating revenues, and that statistic will come into play here when I go through expenditures. And also taking out the $3 million transfer in. So $8 million, you know, this is the charges for services, operating revenues. Next slide, please. Sewer fund expenditures. With the enterprise funds, we pay for capital projects right out of the fund. It's a little different than the General Fund-funded projects, where we transfer the money to the Capital Improvement Fund, and we pay for all the projects out of that fund. So if you're just looking at the General Fund, you're gonna see transfers out, and those go for projects, so it's going to the Capital Improvement Fund, and we pay for those projects. For the enterprise funds, those capital projects are incorporated into their expenditure budget. So that's why you can see capital expenditures of $9.5 million. There's other components of capital projects that are built into contractuals, et cetera. So for the most part, the sewer expenditures are tracking. There's a capital project total of $9.9 million. It's, like I said, it's a $9.5 million of capital expenditures budgeted, plus a little bit in the contractuals section. We have $2 million in annual sewer rehab, $3.8 million was for Locus Colton, and then $4 million was budgeted for the East Street Basin project. So $9.9 million total of the $15.7 million total budget. So if we net that out of the projects, net that out of $15.7, you're kind of looking at about $5.8 million of operating expenditures. In this case, I'm gonna include debt service in my operating expenditure number. So when I mentioned the $8 million operating revenues versus the $5.8 million operating expense, we have a little over $2 million in net, taking out capital projects, net surplus. I mean, there's differences for equipment purchases, things like that, but with enterprise funds, you really wanna be operating in a net surplus when you exclude projects, because you need to have additional funds to pay for those projects. And then you may accumulate those reserves and pay for projects all the month. You may have to borrow and use those, that surplus to pay for, increase the debt service costs. So, next slide, please. Yes, that concludes the nice presentation. I'll remind the community that all these reports are available online at the address noted on the screen there. And then I'll see if there are any questions.
Councilmember Ward?
I wonder if we could go back to the slide, the General Fund FY '24 revenues. On there, it noted a few larger ordinance violations related to properties. And I was just curious what that was about, given how big that is.
I don't know if you remember, I can't remember the particular incidents, but there's accumulation of, like, larger landlords that have daily violations related to, you know, issues that are found by inspectors, and they accumulate to large amounts and then administer to court. There could be rulings, and then that's where those larger dollar amounts come in. I can't remember the specifics, except that this now added my last month's notice, so. But I can get that to council afterwards.
Yeah, I'd love to know what that is.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Bowden?
I just have two comments or questions. I noticed that income tax increased significantly. Is there a reason?
That's, that was one of them dramatically last year, and we increased the budget. Can you go back one more slide to major tax revenues? There we go. So income tax, you can see at the partner account, we went up $1 million. Now, we have from the partner revenue, that they were allocating some taxes into PPRT from income tax. Well, even last year, that should've been a little higher, so we're gonna see a little adjustment there. But a lot of that, it just has to do with this hot economy, you know, like there's, these companies are... But a lot of that, it just has to do with this hot economy, you know, like there's, these companies are just, and people. You know, there's just more dollars in the economy, more profits being generated, you know, that are going to that. There's a slight increase in the local government distributive fund, but it wasn't super material for the year. But, you know, every time they increase that, you know, it does impact us a bit.
Okay, the other thing is, the sewer fund seems to have a lot of bond money. And that is, is that primarily for the Locust Colton from the IEPA?
Some of, actually, a significant portion of it is from an old bond, yeah.
I think I remember that one, okay.
You can refinance out of 2018, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And Scott, one other question about our, speaking of bond, but bond rating though. So where are we? Is there a chance we would see movement at some point? I don't know, just your thoughts, opinions?
You know, strong double A, I mean, there's, there's pros and cons, you know, the strong double A, there's not a huge difference, my understanding, with your cost structure related to a triple A versus a double A. Our pension, while our pension liability is a lot better than, you know, the majority of the state, it's actually going to adjust downward a little bit this year. We haven't got all the details on that, because we've been putting in 100% contributions, but it can be driven up and down by the market, the stock market, even though they smooth, smooth the, the investment returns. We have a, I'm sorry, I'm getting into weeds here, but with our pensions, we have our audited liability and then we have our actuarial for the levy. So the levy, they smooth it so that your contributions don't go like this, if the stock market goes like this. But for the audit, it can go like this, because the stock market's huge. And even IMRF had a big change this prior year, because they have a calendar year year-end and the stock market was way down, so we're going to make a swing. Long story short, though, the, our pension liability is kind of a big factor. So we're making progress there, but when I check with Moody's, you know, that's kind of the holdback for us. I mean, we have a strong local employers, you know, ability to grow, et cetera. So there's, there's not a lot we can do to force things along, you know, from my, I guess, professional opinion. Strong double A, we're proud to have that, we got a slight upgrade, you know, in that review last year when we did the library, I think it went from, you know, positive outlook to stable, you know, kind of thing. So, you know, we're still paying attention to it. You know, until we have a bigger shift in that pension liability, you know, we're going to have to go out and ask for another ratings review, because you have to pay for those. We'll probably put that on hold for now. Sorry, kind of.
No, 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 thank you so much for, great answer, for putting me on the spot. I didn't mean to, but thank you, I appreciate it. Other questions? Okay, awesome. And next, we have city managers' discussion, deputy city managers' discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I think we have three or four slides today. First is Camp Brugella, considering, thank you. September 30th, 5 to 10 in downtown square. Sounds like a good time to explore the beer, so. Next slide, please. It's that time of year, October 1st Friday, 1st Friday, downtown Bloomington, October 6th from 5 to 8. Then you got downtown Bloomington trick-or-treat, October 27th from 5 to 8 throughout the downtown. And Catherine, I think we might have another one, maybe? And Fall 2023, free bulk pickup, October 2nd through 13th. So that's coming up, starting next week, actually. For more information, you can go to BloomingtonIL.gov/solidwaste. And this is an annual event that we do, where crews are out, obviously, to help you clean up your properties. And if you've got bulk waste that you want to get rid of, certain types of bulk waste, you can get rid of it for free. Crews will follow the leaf brush trimmings and bulk calendar that can be found at BloomingtonIL.com/solidwaste. We want people to know that the schedule can be adjusted based on weather and how much stuff is out there, frankly. So while this calendar will be there, it can change based on weather and how much people put out. Acceptable bulk includes furniture waste generated by cleaning out a house and remodeling debris, among other things. Now, we're not going to, if you tear out your garage, we're not going to take all of that, those types of large items. But there's a list of things that we will take on the website, as I said. And the final thing I want to mention is, back to Scott's report, the financial report, where he mentioned the arena and also golf. Eric, I see Eric and David in the audience, correct me if I'm wrong, but for August, the golf program was 10% over the 20% that we were from '22. So that's a significant jump. And it's, for sure, it's about weather, but it's also about some of the things that that team is doing to recruit people to the courses and just get people out there and some of the assistance we've got out there. The other thing with the arena, and there's more to come, but I think it's worth noting that Anthony Nelson is, he's, he's out there pushing. Between now and April, there are the possibility of 20-plus shows. And that part of that is really children's events, I'll say that. And he's out, he's putting us on people's radars, he's getting told, et cetera, et cetera. So more to come, but I just think it's worth mentioning that there's a lot of activity going on with the arena. The arena, the numbers are starting to show, so.
And there's one coming up, right? I love the 90s, right?
I did this.
Vanilla ice, ice, ice baby.
Sugarhill, Danny?
I know, I see those guys out there, the mature crew, nodding, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I don't have anything in the mayor's discussion, so I'm going to turn it over to councilmembers and see if you have anything. Councilmember Hendricks?
Yeah, I'll follow up a little bit with Anthony Nelson. And I was going to give a shout out and kudos to BCPA staff for the board teachers event that was last night, which was the, what, first sold-out event in three years. All it took was, you know, teachers, some drinks and my Sunday night scaries before going back to school to get the place packed. So it was a really good event and, you know, staff pulled it off really well. Second thing I have is, if you're looking for something to do this weekend or next weekend, the McLean County Museum of History is having their cemetery walk. So you can get out there and learn about local history at the Evergreen Cemetery. And then the final thing, just a reminder, I'm having a ward open house at the Hanger Art Company on October 2nd from 5 to 6:30. And city manager Ted Gleason is going to be there, county board member Leah Klein is going to be there, and then newly appointed county board member Eric Hansen is also going to be there. So all the representatives for the board and that county district. So come out and, you know, meet us, bring concerns, or just check out the art that the Hanger has. Thanks.
Councilmember Ward?
Yeah, I really would like to thank the immigration project and the city staff for a very nice welcoming week that was put on. The activities were well-attended and bigger and better next year. And the other thing I would like to say, since we were talking a little bit about bulk pickup, please make sure that leaves are separated from brush and not mixed in with the bulk. It's all processed differently and needs to be separated. Otherwise, I'm going to give permission to Kevin to not pick it up. No, I'm kidding, but it makes it much easier for the staff to pick it up, okay? Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank and congratulate the local Bloomington Normal Chapter, the NAACP, for a wonderful gala dinner on Saturday night, the Freedom Fund Dinner. And really congratulate the chapter on the state convention being held here and over a century of really good, important work.
Thank you, seeing no others, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. And all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned, see you next time.